Good afternoon. I want to thank everyone for coming in this very important meeting of the City Council as we do to people's work. At this time, council members, if you would please stand for the invocation which will be given by Reverend Johnny Drake from Livingston Victory Center here in Portsmouth, Virginia. And then if we could have everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pastor Drake, good to see you, sir.
Praise the Lord.
I really do. It is good to see you.
Amen. Hallelujah. To our mayor, amen. Honorable Wright, the other members of council, the other officials, and our community citizens, I've come with a cry of the plight of our city, and yet with the praise for the victory that has been placed in your hands. If you place your hands in his, the psalmist declares, "It's a good thing to give thanks unto the Lord, to show forth thy loving kindness in the morning and thy faithfulness every night. For thou lord hast made me glad through thy works, and I will triumph in thy words by your hand." Let us pray. O heavenly Father, we glorify your name as we humble ourselves in your presence. Here we are standing in the power of your majesty. So let us truly understand that as we assemble together with various ideas and a multitude of plans and directions revealed in our eyes for our city. And yet we have attempted to evaluate and formulate the best decisions for the elevation of the prosperity and the living standards of all of our people in this city. So let us walk in victory over every circumstance that we might face as we walk in confidence and unity of purpose, that the vision of our people will become a reality in the lives of our community. Bless each heart and every voice that we might echo our joy in what we have or will accomplish in him. So we praise you, Father. We glorify you. In the present name of your dear son, Jesus Christ, we pray, amen and amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, pastor. Members of City Council, would you please indicate your presence electronically? Ma'am clerk? We got everyone here.
Okay. Six members of City Council are present.
Okay, thank you. Members of City Council, you have before your consideration the minutes of a call meeting of September the 9th, 2014, a regular meeting of September the 9th, 2014, and a call meeting of September 15th, 2014. Are there any corrections to the minutes?
Move adoption.
Okay.
Mayor, we have a motion and a second, and you're voting electronically.
Very good.
The minutes are adopted six zero.
Okay, ma'am clerk.
Yes, sir. Ladies and gentlemen, City Council rules require a limit of up to five minutes to speak. As you approach the speaker's podium, you will notice a timer. At the beginning of your five minutes, you will see a green light. Four minutes into your remarks, you will notice a yellow light. At the end of five minutes, you will see a red light, hear a beep, and we ask that you conclude your comments at that time. While speakers have an opportunity to address council on matters of public concern, all comments should be made in a manner that respects the seriousness of the forum and should not be made in a belligerent, sarcastic, or demeaning fashion. A speaker who fails to observe this basic rule of decorum will be deemed out of order and not allowed to conclude his or her comments. City Managers' Report, 14-367, Adoption of an Ordnance to Appropriate $32,641 in the FY 2014-15 Sheriff's Budget and $50,620 in the Clerk of the Circuit Court's Budget for Part-Time Salary Funds appropriated by the State Compensation Board. Vision: Principal Efficient Response of Government. Electronic Roll Call and I Have No Registered Speakers.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and you'll be voting electronically. This item is adopted six zero. 14-368, Adoption of an Ordnance to Ordnance Amending Chapter 9 of the Code of the City of Portsmouth, Virginia to Designate the Mount Calvary Cemetery Complex as a City Cemetery. Vision: Principal Efficient Response of Government. Electronic Roll Call and I Have No Registered Speakers.
Move adoption.
Second.
Mayor, we have a motion and a second, and you'll be voting electronically. This item is adopted six zero. 14-370, Adoption of an Ordnance Appropriating $40,325,841 by Classification to the FY 2014-15 Operating Budget for the Portsmouth Public Schools to Implement the Second Quarter of the Annual Budget. Vision: Principal Efficient Response of Government. Electronic Roll Call and I Have a Registered Speaker, Mr. James Bridgeford.
As Mr. Bridgeford makes his way up, let me at least recognize that we have our superintendent, and I'm sorry, our chairman of the school board here who's about to speak. I see two other members of our school board, Ms. Laura Armstrong as well as Ms. Linda Ridenhour. Good to see both of you. And before you make your comments, Mr. Chairman, let me at least acknowledge and thank you for the opportunity to give feedback during your search, which is headhunter. I thought that was a very good idea, embracing other people's ideas. I think each member of council as well as other elected officials were able to give their input. And then I think you had a couple of community meetings at John Tyler and at Wilson High School.
He's very pleased with the response that we are getting from the public.
Okay.
As for the online surveys especially.
I want to thank the school board for making that possible because that is the way to get buy-in from everyone. And with that, sir, good afternoon.
Good evening, Mayor Wright, Vice Mayor Cherry, and members of council. I would like to, if possible, to give this to your Sergeant Arms for the pass to each one of you.
Sure.
For the council and for the clerk. I give this package to you. I don't know if you have it all or not. It's dialogue between our attorney and your attorney. And it's the oldest date is in the back to the newest date on the front. The only thing I want to do is follow board protocol. What they would like to do is have this read for the record, and that's the very last letter that we received on August 26th. And then from there, you can read it from the back forward and get caught up from there. That'll save us time. I don't want to waste all the good time.
Okay.
It's from Mr. George Wilson to Samuel Meekins, who wrote the letter on behalf originally. Portsmouth School Board Concerns. Dear Mr. Meekins, this letter is in response to yours of July 15th, 2014, and August 19th, 2014, the latter which was received today. In response to your question, please be advised that the city funds its departments on an annual, not a quarterly basis. The purpose of funding the schools on a quarterly basis is to assure that funds appropriated for this fiscal year's optional needs will be applied to those needs and not to operational expenses or other purposes in future years. Council will consider whether to continue the quarterly appropriation practice during the budget process for FY 2015-16. For your additional information, please note that at a recent City Council work session following the school board's retreat, a council member asked whether the school board needed to spend all of the quarter's funds prior to council appropriation of the next year's quarter's funds. The clear answer from the administration was that spending down was not a requirement for the administration to recommend subsequent quarterly appropriation. If that question is causing the division concern, I would appreciate you clarifying that point with them. I trust that the above now answers the questions that you had. However, if you require any further information, please do not hesitate to contact me, George Wilson, City Attorney and competent City Manager. The question was, are we being treated differently than any other department in the city? The law states that we would be treated the same, not equally. It also says that we should not be told how to spend our money. We've learned our lesson. Categorical funding, I understand, is going to be a problem for both sides of the defense as far as trying to get this settled, which we are prepared to do. We'll work with the categorical, but we'd like to be treated like all departments. All departments, I understand, gets annual appropriations, we get quarterly appropriations. If we got to go to half-year, fine. Prior to my coming here this evening, I was told this morning that they had an email for the schedule of a meeting between, a joint meeting for the City Council and the school board. We are working, and we think we have a system worked out. We changing our financial statements, but we'd like to get a good feel of more than one or two. I think we've got the first and the second one done this week. We're changing it to the VSBA method. If this comes about the right way, that we think it will, this will give you, this will give you what you need on a monthly and a quarterly basis, which would probably, or hopefully would solve the problem that we have looking at a quarterly pass by the council. And I think the way it read originally is that you monitor, and we wouldn't have to meet quarterly. We don't mind meeting quarterly. We feel it's a good idea. We need to talk to each other, especially under these circumstances because next year it's going to be even tighter for both of us. So we wanted to get this on the record for the public, and I'm open for any questions. I don't know if I can answer them, but mostly that we wanted to try to make sure that it was understood, that we just, all we're doing is asking for equal way of being funded with our department or division, just like any other. And we're glad, that was a sticking point because we had said that we weren't being treated equal.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate you coming up and speaking, and I attended your retreat, and I was very disturbed with the conversation that took place because of this and the way the board perceived what we council were trying to do. And I brought that back to the council because none of us are trying to manage and micromanage the school board or the school system. And so I brought that and put it on the record just because I did not understand how it got perceived that way and wanted to make sure that we understood that we're not here to do that. And if we're treating you any differently than any other department, then we should not do that as well. We do want to communicate. We do want to meet quarterly. We agreed to do that, but as far as micromanaging the school system, that is not our intent. And I think I brought that up, and everyone up here agrees with that. So please, and if the manager or someone else wants to speak on this matter, the mic is open, but that is not our intent. Okay? And if you would, can you at least give us some indication of how we perceive that? Has someone on staff or someone conveyed to you that that's what our intent is?
Well, the letters, if you, the letter comes in two parts. If you read the first letter at the bottom, we proposed a question of, number one, are we being funded equally like the rest of the departments or divisions, however you call them in the city? And number two, the other question was, are they doing it quarterly? Are we doing it quarterly? Are we being treated differently? And the flexibility, we don't disagree with the categorical. We don't have a problem with that for right now. We feel that we were going to be able to change our minds about that somewhere along the line.
Okay.
And we're willing to do that. We're willing to work and prove ourselves. We have new people on staff now, and they've already, one of them, one of them brand new, and if in three weeks that person has proven their weight. The other thing I have for you, we normally met with the liaisons, I don't know if you still have them or not, to determine how the, who's, the agenda, how the agenda's going to be proposed. We'd normally work between the two groups and say, this is what we propose to have. I know Councilwoman Simmons has said she doesn't want a pure dog and pony show, but we want to try to give you information that's up to date as of right now, today, and let you know where we are with certain things, just like you just mentioned right there about what the group is doing. We, you know, they're saying we haven't, for us to lose a superintendent, we've got a good selection coming, according to them, that it might be a different story once we receive the things. I don't know.
All right. Mr. Manager, can we, or do we want to get finance or someone up here to just speak on this quarterly financing and funding and if it's different than how we do anything else? Can somebody speak to that?
This is a legal question, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
And George has answered it.
All right.
The manager's correct. The attorney for the school board posed to me a question as to the way the city was funding both city departments and the school board. And it's correct, the city funds the city's operating budget on an annual basis. The school board is being funded on a quarterly basis. That was a decision that was made by council during the budget process. Now, the statute that the school board's attorney and I disagree over says that the city may fund the school board, may fund the school board on the same basis as other departments. It does not say shall. So it was the clear decision and direction from council at the time the budget was adopted that for at least this fiscal year, that the appropriations to the school board would be on a quarterly basis. And that's what I communicated to Mr. Meekins. And council can certainly change that anytime it wants to, but the decision back then was, at the time the budget was adopted, that the school board's budget would be adopted on a quarterly basis.
Okay. Ms. Simmons?
Yes, sir. My recollection is the same as Mr. Wilson's, and I think the point of all this, back to a lunch meeting you and I had before the budget, was for us as a council to be more confident in the way money was being spent and that we were appropriating the right amount of money based on what was coming back to us, you know, for the right things. And it would build some trust back in not only the school board and the city council, but in the financial managers on both floors of this building. And I think, and you're right, my comment to you was, I don't want, I look forward to these quarterly meetings. I heard Mr. Parent speak at Something recently as your finance chairman, how pleased he was with your new finance folks that you have on board, employed now, and new programs. And to me, these quarterly joint meetings are about finance. They're not, you know, I'm delighted and I want you to have good programming, but our responsibility on this side of the table is finance, and I want to be sure we're giving you enough money. Maybe we're not funding enough in some certain categories, and I think that's our time to talk about that. It forces us to have the discussion.
Mr. Moody?
Thank you, Mayor. Chairman Bridgeford, I would ask the question, obviously the school board is not pleased with quarterly funding. What problems do you see in quarterly funding?
Listening to, I'm trying to remember, I don't want to call him deputy because he's not a deputy, it's a official, the Assistant Superintendent. We're going to barely finish up one. See, here's the problem. We are a large organization. Quarterly funding may work well with assigning the money, but when you come into closing the quarter, end of the quarters, that's where they're going to have some difficulty. My understanding is going to really, especially since we haven't done it, it's going to cause some fias, a fiasco. So I don't know if it's on your side of the fence or our side. We'll find out because this, well, this can be your first time doing it also. And I'm hoping to be able to come down there and see exactly what kind of problems it's causing because I do have several ideas of how we can remedy that, but...
But we're not requesting you to reconcile your books and have everything sitting at zero at the end of each quarter before you get more funding, are we? That's not the intent.
No, no, no.
That's not my understanding.
Okay.
And we, as you know, we haven't finished the first quarter.
That's correct.
Yet. So I would, my suggestion would be to get back with us and if it's, if you're incurring a lot of problems that you don't feel can be tolerated by quarterly funding, to let us know that. And I think everybody on this council doesn't want to saddle the school board with, you know, problems relative to quarterly funding.
We think what we're going to be able to do, it's going to be our first time doing it, is give you enough information because we're trying to start it in this quarter. He's trying to go back and build it from the new system that we're doing, to give it to you so it will not be a problem under the new way they're doing it. And if that proves out, then fine, and that's what we think we're going to be able to do for you. But we want also to keep track and monitor to see if that, that we're giving you your desired results that you're going to need in finance. And if we're getting it and they're getting it, then hopefully that'll solve it.
Sure.
But the intent here is not to have your finance people, anybody else, doing any additional work trying to close out or reconcile, sir. So please, don't have anybody in your department doing anything other than reporting what you would with anybody else with any other type of financial report. And if there are things that go on from one quarter to the next week, we certainly understand that as well. So that was my concern in your retreat when I heard the way it was being viewed by your board, and that was not the intent that I thought this council had implied, and I wanted to make sure there wasn't someone on staff or someone else conveying something different than what we wanted here. Am I clear with that? Does anybody disagree with?
No.
Okay.
That's why we're not quarterly meeting.
Okay, okay. All right. Thank you. Mr. Cherry?
Yeah, you kind of summed it up, Mayor, but you're right. Incremental funding has been a way of life for this country for the last six years. So, and it's not an intent that you got to balance your books at the end of every quarter. Nobody has to do that. But the way money's coming for the federal government with CRAs and secret station, nobody gets all that money on day one. And the secret, and incremental fund is what most of us do all the time in our homes. If we make $60,000 a year, you don't get $60,000 on January 1st. You get $5,000 a month, 250, whatever it is, 250,000 every other week or however you get paid. It's the same concept, but yet we still function. The federal government has been functioning that way for the last six years. And if you run into a problem at the end of the quarter, that's why we're here. There's only a couple of floors that separate the school board from the city council. We're not going to let you run out of money or not get, be able to do something because you come, you get close at the end of the quarter. You just simply got to let us know. But we want to, we're trying to fix something that we haven't tried yet. This is the first quarter, this is going to be, that you've done it, but it's not something that's unique. It's just something that you have, we haven't done in this building yet. So let's try it, see how it works. If it doesn't, we're going to meet, like you said, we're going to meet every quarter, and we'll reevaluate.
I can say we're going to try it. The only thing is, when you look at the divisions that do this type of thing on a quarterly basis, it's not, I think it's only one or two school systems as large as ours that's doing it, if you go look at the grand scheme of things.
Yeah, I saw the letter. I think there was three in the letter that were doing it and that were larger than ours. But, and the scale of the system is not, is not the issue because, you know, the entire country, Department of Defense, Army, everybody has operated on incremental funding for the last four, five, six, six years. So it can be done, it's done on larger scales, it can be done on a smaller scale. It's just a matter of trying it, getting used to it, and working out some bugs, which everybody's going to have at the beginning, but it can be done.
Yeah. And please don't misunderstand. I'm not saying give us all the money that we need upfront. I'm not saying that.
Because of what's happening at the state level now, we might not even have all the money to give you, you know?
The state might not have enough money, and I understand that.
Exactly. So we might have an option, as most federations don't have an option, to even give you all the money upfront if we, if we wanted to. We might not even have it. So this is an adjustment for all of us. We all know the state's facing a $2.4 billion shortfall, and that money is coming from the locality. We've got to take the cuts, just like the states. So we have to be mindful of how we put our money out too to make sure we can meet all the competing needs because sometimes we might have to pay this one this week and this one next week as we, as we all experience it. So, but we would not, in the circumstances, we agree with this council, we've had this conversation when the mayor brought that back to us, I think it was last month, Mayor. We've all said we would not allow the school system to go short at any point in time if it occurred that way. And he brought that back to us last month, and we, all seven, you know, were in agreeance. So I don't think you have anything to be worried about.
And a final note, Mr. Chairman, one of the advantages I thought of this process was to allow you, the school board, because we're going in this first year of categorical funding, to be able to allow us to move that around to where you see fit because, again, until we stabilize this and get monies in the right categories, we don't want you locked in. And if you see mid-year that you don't need money over in some other category but want it over in your teacher salaries or something like that, we want to be able to make that adjustment to do that. So it was, I thought, a little bit more allowing you a little bit more flexibility as well. So I think that was the aim. Ms. Randall?
I think that it was for such a time as this for me to be here on this board, having been the only one here who's worked both sides, starting from the school division and understanding the financial issues that came from there, and then coming to the city board to see the city's total picture of it. One of the things we have to recognize that, that these are two separate elected bodies working with budgets. And the budgets have to work together because all of the funding is coming from the centralized bulk source, as you're aware. I sometimes think it's, think that we do not really look at the differences that exist, even though the budgets are coming from the same source, but what the entities are for the school are totally different from many of the entities that are from the city. So while they may be coming from a single source, which is from the public, who's putting the money there, we have to make sure, according to what the purpose is and the directives are from the state, the guideline and dictates of the school that needs to be done, that you have to follow those and operate within those parameters. The city has to also make sure that we have the money for you to put in those parameters. So it's really a need to make sure we have open lines of communications, not that the council dictates to you where the money goes because you're in the role of knowing what the needs are for our educational process. We are in the role of ensuring that the funding is there for you to meet the needs of the children who are going to be in many of these seats around here when we are all gone. So it's so very important that we operate from the same worksheet to ensure that you have the needs that you're going to need to prepare the students to take the roles of the elected official. When we are long gone, to see that the schools come along all right because you've got another generation to follow. And I'm saying that to say this, don't get so locked into a box that we forget what the broad picture is all about. And the broad picture is what are we willing to put forth for our future generation who will be the leaders of this city when we are all gone? will be the leaders of this city when we are all gone? We need to be able to sit down and talk about what the basic needs are, how we are going to fund them, and get it done in a way that the city will operate as a unit, not school board here and council here. We are a family, and we've heard it referred to over and over again, the Portsmouth family. Let us not lose sight of that, the Portsmouth family. And if we don't raise a generation of the children, there will be no family for tomorrow. And I just had to get it off my heart because I feel as if we dividing something that we don't need to really divide. We are family, the children and the council. Let's work it that way, and let's sit down and resolve if there is a misunderstanding in some way in the funding. Because we wanna make sure that the children have the money. This council believes in education, but you can't do your jobs unless you understand what your parameters are. So, I know where you're coming from, and I think you need to continue to push, for the children are indeed our future.
Thank you, Ms. Randall. All right, Madam Clerk. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mayor Wright.
And appreciate you coming up and appreciate we getting all that on the record, so we're clear.
I do ask, since we haven't seen it, to read from the back forward, so you get the...
Okay. And thank you for getting us there. And I noticed when you were speaking, I saw another school board member come in, Mr. Claude Parent. Good to see you, sir, and thank you for all you do. All right, Madam Clerk.
There are no additional speakers on this item. We have a motion.
Is there a second?
A second. And a second, and you'll be voting electronically.
I'm pushing wrong, but I guess I'm so excited about it.
This item is adopted 6-0. Council members, we need to just back up one, 'cause I kinda skipped one tonight. 14-369, adoption of an ordinance accepting a grant in the amount of $5,000 from the Virginia Commission for the Arts and appropriating said funds in the FY 2014-15 Grants Fund for use by the Portsmouth Museums to support the return of public art to Portsmouth Project. Vision principal neighborhoods and sense of community. Electronic roll call and I have no registered speakers. We have a motion and a second, and you'll be voting electronically. This item is adopted 6-0.
Didn't want to amuse them, folks are getting nervous out there.
No nervousness. Okay. 14-371, adoption of a resolution creating and appointing members of a task force to develop a flood plan, management plan, and to serve as a public information development group. Vision principles change in new directions, neighborhoods and sense of community, quality of life and efficient response of government. Electronic roll call and I have no registered speakers.
Adoption.
We have a motion and a second, and you'll be voting electronically. This item is adopted 6-0. 14-372, adoption of a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a memorandum of understanding with Portsmouth Port and Industrial Commission and various other documents related to the revitalization of 3920 Burton's Point Road and an adjacent strip of land. Vision principle, robust economy for working men and women. Electronic roll call and I have no registered speakers. We have a motion and a second, and you'll be voting electronically. This item is adopted 6-0. New business, 14-373, boards and commissions, Councilman Moody.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Mayor, members of council, there are no boards and commission appointments to deliberate tonight.
Okay. 14-374, items submitted by council members.
Let me, first of all, I had two birthdays celebrations last week. Mr. Charlie Harrow, longtime Civic League president at Mount Herman Civic League, turned 90 years old, and he had a birthday breakfast at the Amlet Center here in Portsmouth, and I wanna congratulate him. And as well, Mr., um, I'm trying to think, your church member, Paige Crump, Mr. Vernon Crump. Yeah, turned 85 years old. He's a longtime activist and done a lot of things in this city, and he had a, a birthday luncheon, and it was well attended, and it was good to see so many people there. So, I wanna wish both of those folks a happy birthday. And we've got the Fish Bowl Parade coming up this weekend. Wanna make sure everyone gets out and participates. That parade starts, what, at 10 o'clock? And I thank everybody that is in it, we're starting to line up around 8, 8 or 8:30. And I wanna congratulate Ms. Michelle Williams from Portsmouth, Virginia, who was elected the Fish Bowl Queen this year. So, and I think she'll be crowned over at Norfolk State prior to kickoff of the game. So, congratulations, Ms. Williams. Okay, are there any other items submitted by council? Okay, Madam Clerk, thank you.
Okay. 14-375, report on pending items, and we have none this evening. 14-376, non-agenda speakers. Our first speaker is Ms. Teri Danaher.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Teri Danaher, and you already have my address, so I don't need to give you that. Before I forget, I'm, I'm actually here to talk about IRK, 'cause I'm IRkt. But I do wanna mention that on October 4th, it is the day that we celebrate as a city our status as a Coast Guard city. And we will be having a special celebration at what is now called Portside again, North Landing, from noon until 5:00 PM. There will be music and food, and we'll be having beer and wine and soft drink and water sales. We'll have lots of activities for families, and we're hoping to have a really good turnout this year. This is our fifth year celebrating our status, and we have re-upped, we're hoping to get approved for another five years. So, please, everybody come out and have a good time in a couple of weeks. Now, on to the serious discussion tonight. As anybody who has been keeping up with transportation news in the paper and on TV is aware, we have been having a lot of problems with billing for the tolls for the downtown and midtown tunnel. Over the last seven months, eight months, we're heading for our ninth month now. And these problems have just covered a broad range of different issues. I have been fortunate enough not to have used the tunnel very much. I think I've been through it twice since the toll started. My husband and I prefer to take the Jordan, even though it costs more, because we are hoping that some of that money that we're spending on the Jordan will eventually come back to Portsmouth in the form of taxes. So, keep it up. You know, let's, let's see what we can do about that. But oddly enough, my nephew, who was here visiting once, took the tunnel to get out of Virginia, and he had a 75 cent toll, or should've had a 75 cent toll. He took his trip on March 2nd, and he got a bill two weeks ago, the first, first bill. It was a notice of violation, he never got a bill, and it was for $27.25. That was $25 of fee, what they are calling an administration fee. And, and that is something that is allowed by our legislature. So, people who are getting charged those fees really need to complain to our legislators. They, they passed the law that allows that to happen, and in fact, it is the state that ends up enforcing that. And that fee is raised every 30 days. So, it goes from 25 to 50 and then up, and then you're threatened with collections and all sorts of other things. And this has been happening to quite a few people. My nephew just happened to hit close to home, but I've been keeping track. I've, I've asked for input and have actually passed this information along to Dave Forster, and he used some of it in his articles. People are having problems. He just did an update today. They aren't cashing checks, or he's not cashing checks properly. So, people are not getting their correct deductions from their toll accounts, and that's causing problems further down the, the line when everything catches up with them and they don't know that their, their accounts have been, have had money taken out, and then they run over the limit, and then they get a fee attached. They get, they get a bill saying, "Your, your account's low $25, thank you." They, they've had problems with the auto replenish. They've had problems with the, the information they send out, asking for payment has been wrong, so that they said that they accepted electronic, electronic checks, and they don't. And that came up because somebody tried to fill one out and realized that the routing, there weren't enough spaces for the routing number for the banks. So, there are myriad problems with, with that alone. And, and I'm asking that you all help us keep the pressure on Richmond to continue to monitor this and to, to come to our aid, because we need this kind of thing taken care of. And we also need to make sure that when the tolls are supposed to be going up, we need to look at that again and say, "Really? I mean, the service is terrible, so obviously we shouldn't be paying full prices for the, for the service." The other thing I, I wanted to mention is the closure schedules, which seem to be all over the place, for the tunnels themselves and also for the roadworks that go on around the tunnel construction. And I was standing in a parking lot with somebody the other night at 7:00, and they got a little ping on their, their phone. And basically, they were getting a message that, well, part of Frederick Boulevard was gonna be closed. So, that needs to be addressed too.
Okay.
I'll send the rest of my stuff through email.
Very good. And thank you for mentioning the Coast Guard Celebration Day. We do look forward to that. And just wanna let you know, I think Secretary Arby Lane did an outstanding job with his message to the ERC folks about their concerns with the billing and all, and the pressure's still on, at least with this mayor.
But you guys, you have a direct line, so please keep it up.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Good night.
Good night.
My name is Betty Ashbery, and I live in the Westmore Town Houses in the Churchland section of Alfera City. Wanna congratulate you all. You managed to put us on the front page of the paper again. You've made us the laughing joke of the whole area again. I kinda equate this to the lady in Norfolk that was drawing a paycheck for so long for not going to work. I don't know, but when I worked for the city of Portsmouth, if you didn't do your job and you were told that you were supposed to do things in a certain amount of time, you didn't have a job. Of course, that came under the city itself, it didn't come under the city council. So, I may have been able to keep my job forever, just sitting down there drawing a paycheck and not doing anything. So, I wanted to come down here tonight and had planned before all of this occurred in the paper this morning to compliment you all on the acquisition of the Frederick Military School for our, for our recreation center and for 801 Water Street for our police department. But you sure put a kink in that, because I wanna blame you for getting phone calls this morning, for me getting phone calls this morning, waking me up before I ever got out of bed, saying, "Have you read the morning paper?" And then telling me to get out of bed and go get it and read it and call them back. I'm so very upset about this. And from all of the citizens that I have talked to in this city today, you got a lot of upset people in the city of Portsmouth. I'm not gonna threaten anybody with the council election because I think that's a waste of time. You don't influence people on how to vote in a council election. But I will tell you that I'm very disappointed in some of the council members, very disappointed. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ashbery.
Mr. Al Holmes.
Good evening. My name is Al Holmes. I live at 115 Keaper Street in the city of Portsmouth, the subdivision known as First Watch at River Point. Before I begin, I'd like to give some pictures.
You can give them to Sergeant Ryan.
I'm before council tonight to ask the council to embrace our neighborhood, to ensure that the developer completes or do the necessary work that he proffered to the city. One of the main things that I'm concerned about is those swinging arms, as you note on those pictures, because this subdivision was considered one of the premier areas for a gated community. I know that you, Mayor Wright, Vice Mayor Paige Churey, and also Mr. Meeks ride past there every day. And we know that what was proffered and what was advertised for that community, that it would be a gated community, and the gate would be similar to that of the estates. I've talked to Mr. Bruso, and Mr. Bruso informed me that the ordinance Z06-02 does not specify the height, the length, or anything about the gate. But in the documents that were provided to the homeowners, it stated that it would be a gated community. All right. At this point, what is there you see before those pictures are some swinging arms. This much like if you had a vicious dog. Everything in that zoning thing was supposed to be done, like the fencing and the berms were just like that of the estates. Well, when it came to our gate, which we have asked him over and over to put the kind of gate that he proffered into the city, he refuses. So, he put those gated arms. Initially, people were just driving around those, those arms until he put some big boulders on the side to keep people from driving on the grass. As I was stating earlier, though that gate, if he understood the meaning of a gate and what is meant by gated community, which was advertised and which was proffered to the city as being one of the premier areas for a gated community, that situation that he has is not a gate. It does not meet the qualification of a gated community, because the residents there, we on the streets, the city does not provide us anything, we had to prepare our streets, we have our own person to read our water, we have people coming in skateboarding on our streets, skateboarding on our, our walking trails, we have dogs defecating in our neighborhood that don't even live there, we have to pay for our own landscaping, we have our own trash collection, everything, and we have a private community. So, therefore, people who move there expect that they be able to control vehicular traffic and pedestrian traffic. If you note on those pictures, those boulders will allow people to walk around them, that those swinging arms will allow people to go under them, and it does not meet the definition of a gated community. So, I'm asking tonight that the council willing join us to ensure that that developer does what he's supposed to do as he proffered to the city regarding the gate and other things that he has failed to do out there. He's winding down there, the lights are basically almost gone. And I bring to you this because I have been elected the President of the Board of Directors, and I feel that I need to be here to, to voice what the concerns of those, of, of the homeowners. We are in the process of buying a gate to make it right, but I know the city holds a $100,000 construction bond, and that bond is to ensure that that developer does what he's supposed to do before he leaves out of there. And I want to, to say tonight, I hope the council will not release that money until he, the council has gotten back with the Board of Directors to ensure that he has done what he has supposed to do. Again, I'd like you to look closely at those pictures, those, that swinging arms, as this relates to, like you got a bad dog. You put up a fence, you leave it, the entrance wide open, but you decide to put some swinging arms and do not attach it to the fence, attach, attach them to the fence. So, the dog gets out to bite somebody, and you say, "Okay, I have this fence, my dog is, my dog is, was fenced." What was your dog correctly fenced? Fenced? No. You haven't allowed the dog to go around, go under, and go outside the gate. So, by default, I would say, that's not a gate. And we, as homeowners in a private community, have the right to control vehicular and pedestrian traffic coming in on our private streets.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Holmes. Let me ask you a question. You said the discrepancy was, it's not in the specs what type of gate it is?
No.
But it was proffered?
But proffered. And that's when I came up, Mr. Bruso, Mr. Bruso, I asked him, "Why wasn't the language used that was proffered by the developer in the ordinance?" And that was Z0602.
And that takes precedent, I believe, over...
Right.
That what was proffered. Is that correct? I believe. But, okay, we're looking at that. Mr. Cherry?
Yes, ma'am. I, I was just going to say, I was going to ask the manager and attorney if they will look into it. Because I vaguely remember this from, from years ago when I was serving on planning commission that this was an issue. If, if they can look into it and get back with you.
Well, I'm not saying this to be sarcastic. Over three weeks ago, I went to Mr. Rowe's office and asked to have a sit-down. I wouldn't have been here tonight if I had gotten a call back.
Well, he'd have option now. He'd have to get back with you.
Okay. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Holmes.
Ms. Elvira Johnson.
Good evening, Mayor, city council, citizens of Portsmouth. My name is Elvira Johnson. I reside at 3313 Armstrong Drive in the North Truxton section of Portsmouth. I'm here tonight to ask council, or should I say, Mr. Rowe and Mr. Moody, a young lady stood before you about a month ago and asked you about a citizen advisory committee, so far as the pines is concerned. I don't believe she's been told anything. And I know I haven't been told anything about what's going on. I know I have been talked down to about what was going on. What I would like to know is, now that it has been acquired, purchased, purged up, cleaned up, children playing on the field, how come the other part of the city don't know about it? How come we haven't had the opportunity to tour, as we were told and promised that we would get a tour of this facility? We haven't gotten there yet, haven't even gotten an invitation. I know my address is on the mailing list. I get a lot of mail. I do. I would like to know, when is it going to become available for the citizens that have fought so hard and so long to get this facility up and running now that you all have acquired it? And it's strange to me, I can't speak for everybody, but it's strange to me, Mr. Rowe, when you chastised me to let me know that you had to do your surveys and you got to make sure the land is this and the land is that. On the 26th of August, you acquired the land and on the 22nd of September, they playing football out there. That's some fast work. That's some real fast work. It really is. And I still haven't gotten a call, nor a letter, or an invite from you, or you, or you, to go and look at this property that is or was moving and ready. Why haven't any of the civic league presidents gotten any kind of information about that? How come we don't know what's going on in there? But you claim that you have acquired the land for our children, but yet and still our children are not in there. So whose children are, are in there? Is it just Parks and Recreation that has control over this? Because I thought it was going to be a mutual understanding that me, citizens, Parks and Recreation, and city council, I thought all of us were supposed to work together. I thought we were supposed to be a Portsmouth family. But I'm finding out, living in Portsmouth, Lord, help us. Help us. What is the agenda? Why is it hidden? Why can't we be a part of this process? Why you keep closing the door on us? Why can't we come and see what you claim you have to offer us for our children? What's the secret? About several months ago, you had a man standing in front of you asking you about backroom deals. I don't care about that. I want to know what's happening with the children, for the children, and why the parents can't know nothing about it. Mr. Rowe, Mr. Moody, I pick you two because you two were the ones that talked to me or talked at me the most. But as a parent, a grandparent, and a citizen of this, this here city, I want to know what's going on. I'm about as tired of coming up here talking to you all as you all are tired of listening to me talk about it, but I'm not going to quit. I think that's what you want, but I'm not going to do it. The children in this city deserves better from you all, our elected officials. As Ms. Ashbery said, I'm not going to threaten you with a vote because I only have one. I'm just going to keep coming right back and asking you, when do we get a chance to see what it is you claim you have acquired for our children? Because I don't understand. How can you have something for us and we can't even see it? That's worse than Christmas, not being Christmas. How can you say that with a straight face, Mr. Rowe? How can you say that, Mr. Moody, Mr. Cherry, any of you? How can you sit up there and just say, it's there, it's yours, it's all there? You want to change the name. You need a name. You don't want the pines anymore. We've given you names. Call it Lucy. Call it Lucy Overton, Memorial. I don't care what you call it, but let us get in there and see your moving and ready facility. Because we haven't gotten anything, no one. I'm tired of my phone ringing too, wants to know what's going on with this city council. You want us to be a family and treat you with the respect that you think you deserve? Give us ours.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Just for your information, the matter came up in our work session earlier and, and it was brought up and discussed. And I personally think it was a, a lost opportunity on our part because once again, we had an opportunity to send out notifications to all of the civic league presidents, even if we weren't able to put the group together to give you a notification of what we were doing. We did what we call a soft opening, but why we didn't do that, I don't understand and I don't agree with it either. We do want citizens buy-in. We will have an opportunity to do that. We want to engage our Parks and Rec Commission as well as an advisory board, but I, I think we failed. Once again, because this thing has an opportunity to be great for Portsmouth and it's not going to be great unless we include all of you. So I apologize because I thought it should have been handled differently and you will get that invitation to come to it. Mr. Moody?
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Johnson, I think my suggestion on the name was to do exactly what you're advocating, that's to get citizens involved. At the work session that the mayor just mentioned, Mr. Rowe defined what that area's going to be. And I'd like to call on the city manager to fill in some of those blanks because I think, I think your invitation needs to be more than just a general thing. I think we need to set a date and follow through on it. That I, I agree with you 100%. And also, I would ask the manager to share with us who did play on the field and who, who is going to be allowed to play on the field going forward. Mr. Rowe?
First, I disagree with what's been said about how this thing was opened. It's like this, it's like buying a house that's full of junk, that's been vacant for four years, that's got all the shrubbery overrun, that has not been maintained for four years, it's got high grass, it's got cobwebs in the attic. The roof might leak and you've got mildew. All that stuff had to be cleaned out. We closed the last week in August. We had city crews there, Labor Day weekend, the Saturday. It's a three-day weekend. It's a national holiday. It's the end of summer. Most people want the time off. We had a crew out there, and you probably saw it, working all day Saturday, that Labor Day weekend, to start whacking down the overgrowth. If that's not a good faith effort is, then, then I don't know what it's going to take to show that we care. We worked hard to cut the grass, to get it in a playable fashion. The buildings were full of junk. It was as if someone had hit the fire drill button and said evacuate these buildings, everything from unusable furniture. Now, I don't think I recall that move-in-ready, the building next door was move-in-ready, but it was full of junk that had to be disposed of. The sheriff, thank goodness for the sheriff, had a workforce, three crews, working for a whole week, taking junk out of those buildings and cleaning up the mildew that existed and grew for a period of four years. You don't want to walk into a room that's full of black mold. And so that was not ready until this past weekend, this past Friday, when council had a, a chance to go through and look at the property. This is a city asset. This is not a neighborhood asset, just like, for example, City Park is not the private park or the neighborhood park for Park Manor. It's very rare that you, one can find 30 acres of land in a city that's only 30 square miles that's centrally located. And this needs broad citizens' participation, broad citizens' participation, not just one civic league, not just one neighborhood. And that will come. And that's why council created a Parks and Recreation Commission. And as I said before, when you asked the question about, you know, why isn't it open? We had not owned the property. We had not closed on the property. Because the property was surrounded by industrial uses, particularly on the south side, we had to do our due diligence to make sure that the property was environmentally clean. Because if it wasn't, my recommendation in council would not be, would be not to buy the property. If we found that the property had chemicals or heavy metals that would be detrimental to not just children, because this is a park for all people, of all ages, but detrimental to our citizens who we love. We love our citizens. And so the, the short answer is, is that once we closed on the property, we worked hard to empty the buildings of the junk, to get them clean, to get the grounds clean. And I don't think that it's been hidden under a bushel basket that we, our intention right from the very start was to use the grounds because we are very short on athletic fields. That's the, one of the biggest complaints that we hear this time of the year, there's no place to either practice football or to play football. It did open on Monday because those fields are playable. And the people who were playing on that field were people from the city of Portsmouth. It's not some private club and it won't be a private club. This may sound like I'm rambling, but it's a city asset, number one. Number two, we had an obligation to make the property clean and ready. No one was short-changed in the process because the planning for the, the total use of that property is not going to be a one-day event. It's not going to be a three-month event. It's going to take a lot of hard work by the citizens. Just imagine what could be there. How about a splash park with a lazy river that you could get on and enter to? How about a rock wall for those who have adventure in their blood? How about a high ropes course? These are the things that take time to think about and plan, but not only to think about and plan, but to get program for inclusion in the capital budget. Could I answer your question?
Thank you. Yeah, I think that the, the point is, citizens want to be included. We need to send notification out to all of the civic leagues and if nothing else, let them know where we are and what we're doing so everybody has buy-in into the process. Once we start doing something and nobody bought into it, then they feel left out. And I don't think the intent was that, but we've done something and we didn't convey it to you, the citizens, and so you feel that way. That's why I said it was a failure. Because our job is to make you part of what we're trying to do so we can achieve all of those marvelous things that the manager just asked. And it is not about how much we know. It is about how much we care. And the people don't care how much you know until they know how much you care. And when you leave them out and explain later why you did that, then they feel like we don't care. Mr. Moody?
I agree, Mayor. We still haven't answered one of her questions. I feel that we should set a date. Council was offered a tour of the facility. Citizens have seen things in unfinished condition. I think it would enlighten them to the task at hand if they would see what we saw last week.
Absolutely.
There's a lot of potential. The fields are one positive thing. Some things are going to be, work under construction for some time. So why can't we set a date down the road? Doesn't have to be tonight. I'm not pressing you for a date tonight, but I think within the next week or so, we should be able to organize an open house and organize some tours, even if we have to do it in, in quadrants of the city. I don't, I don't think that's all that difficult of a task. That's what I'm asking, Mayor.
No, I, I agree. And I, and I think being upfront with you now and allowing you to see all of those 30 acres and see the challenges that we have, and I think get some input from you with some things that you would like to see there because there are some golden opportunities there. I just don't want us to do it by ourselves and I don't want some department or manager or anybody else flying the kite alone. I want all of us there. So yeah, Mr. Moody, that's exactly what we're talking about and, and I think we need to do that. And again, we see the challenges. You be a part of the whole process so we'll know where we're going down the road. And, and that's just important because again, if you're not using it and your kids are not using it and you feel like it's for somebody else, then we truly have failed. We failed you and the taxpayers who, who've helped fork over this $4 million for this valuable asset. So we want you all part of the process. So the sooner we get you in there, the sooner we at least give you an overview so you can see where we are, the sooner you can be a part of it. So I, I think that's the point. And Mr. Moody, you're right. We probably should have something sooner than later to at least give them an initial overview. Mr. Cherry?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, the other part of that was about the citizens and how that committee or whatever that would be formed. We discussed it also in the work session, but I'm going to let Mr. Rowe tell the citizens what we talked about.
Thank you, sir. We, council does have, the city does have a Parks and Recreation Commission. And I didn't have it at the time, but I do have the minutes of the June 11th, 2014 meeting in which the, the pines, 1801, was discussed. So our citizens' participation actually started at late spring about the fact that the city was in the process of acquiring. At the risk of picking a time that doesn't work, and I'm looking at our staff over there, how about if we set up an open house for Friday at noon? And anybody that wants to come, come and report to the, come in the gate and park and we'll take you on a tour of the 30 acres. And it will be, because it's mostly open space, it'll be mostly outdoors. And so wear comfortable walking shoes, meet at the gate. We'll have as many vans as we can to take you from one end of the facility to the next. As far as your question about the Parks and Recreation Commission, council talked in work, a work session about turning this over to the Parks and Recreation Commission, which actually meets tomorrow night, and charging them with the responsibility of coming up with a civic engagement process that involves citizens throughout the city to be part of the planning process. And again, this is going to be not just short work. It's going to be, when you think about developing a park for 30 acres of land, it's something that you don't do in a month. It's something that you don't do in six months. It's going to take a while. And I would bet you a dollar, no, I'll bet you a nickel, that had we kept the gates closed and allowed for six months to, to lapse while some group, whatever group it was, thought about the future use of the pines, we would have been chastised for not opening the gates and let, at least let people either walk around the grounds or play on the fields. But 12:00 noon this coming Friday, report to the gate. But 12 noon this coming Friday, report to the gate, and we'll give you a tour.
Ms. Randall?
I would just like to add to that. I think the more open a process is, the better the lines of communication is when we deal with projects of this nature. I have to speak on behalf of the community representatives that are here, that have been inquiring about what our plans were for that particular acreage, when we decided in terms of what it was that we were going to do. They have been here from the very beginning, because there was a concern because of the absence in that part of the city. So, I think that maybe some were miscommunication, because there was not an open line of communication to the public, that at this point, we were looking in terms of developing that area. Because it has been discussed in open areas all over the city, and it isn't a part of the city where there is a dire need for something of this nature. And I think that when we think in terms of developing areas around the cities, we need to make sure that every neighborhood, I'm not saying community, would at least have access to whatever acreage there for the recreation of our young people. If not, we cannot build jails large enough to house them, because they are going to get in trouble. And I'm on the regional jail board, and I can tell you about it. But the thing is, they have been inquiring in that Truxton area for quite a while, Truxton, Douglas Park all around, and nothing has been developed out there. So, if we're thinking in terms of supplying our youth needs in zones or whatever, let's make sure we equalize them in terms of space and availability of opportunities for our young people to have access to wholesome activities. Let's bear that in mind as our goal. Because regardless of what the economic status of our community may be, we are all taxpayers, and we are truly our neighbors' keepers. And we need to bear that in mind, because we are the backbones for the future of the generation that will follow all of us, sitting up here. So, let that be a goal that we look forward to, regardless of where a child may have been born, that equal access and opportunities are there for them, just like we do with our educational system. And I just throw that out for you to think about.
Thank you, Ms. Randall.
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Simmons?
Brandon just reminded me, the shipyard change of command is at 11 o'clock. And so, let's do this. And the reason why I said noon was that it's lunch hour for a lot of people, and I didn't want to exclude people who are working, who could take off at lunchtime. How about if we do two tours? In fact, we'll do three tours. We'll have one that leaves at noon, one that leaves at 1:00, and one that leaves at 2:00. And that way, if somebody wants to go to the shipyard change of command, they can do that and work it in. For those who are restricted because they work, but they can't take off at noon, this allows them to report at noon. And so, we'll have organized departures at noon, 1 and 2.
And we may even want to look at, John, maybe on a Saturday morning, for people that work and can't get there during lunchtime, if we could have maybe a Saturday morning do that as well, for entering.
But for sure, this, for sure, this weekend, I mean, this Friday.
Okay. Elizabeth?
I think it's wrong.
Thank you, sir. I look forward to being able to take the tour I wasn't able to take last Friday. I just wanted to point out, we talked about the Parks and Recreation Commission. And I think sometimes we think commissions are these folks that meet in a dark room somewhere, and it's all hidden. There are 10 people that are members, volunteer citizens of this city, appointed by the city council, to work with city staff on recreational activities in this city. They meet the fourth Wednesday of every month in this building on the third floor, 5:30 PM, which happens to be tomorrow night this week. And I'm going to tell you who they are, because they represent every zip code in this city. They are Betty Ashbury, Ms. Ashbury, who you've seen tonight, who speaks here frequently, Samuel Blake, Edward Brown, Carl Burden, Joy Copege, Melody Doughty, Terry Hancock, Sharon Moore, Patricia Peel, and Dominique Smith. Maybe you know some of them, maybe you would like to speak to them, they may be your neighbors. And tell them how you feel about what's missing recreation-wise in the city. And for a teeny little minute, I'm going to disagree with Ms. Randall about one thing. It's not just about kids, it's about the seasoned folks, not the seniors, who also are interested in walking and outdoor activity, or learning how to use a computer or other activities, to be provided for not just our children, but the seasoned folks like us in the room. So, talk to us, talk to members of the Parks and Recreation Commission, go to the meeting. It's a public meeting, just like this is. You may not be able to speak, but you can at least see who your commissioners are and speak to them and know who they are.
Okay, well done. And Mr. Ed Brown is also here, who's a member of that. Mr. Brown, would you stand up? All right, good to see you, sir.
Ms. Peel is out there as well.
And where's Ms. Peel?
I know her, I see her.
Thank you, that's very good. And Sharon Moore is a representative for the school system.
Yes, she is.
So, we do have school representation there, too. Dr. Edmunds?
Is out there also.
Thank you, Mayor. That is a penalty in being last to speak, because everything else has been said, but I would like to share this. We are so excited about having acquired this piece of property. And we're happy, glad that we have it. We couldn't build what was being suggested some months ago, but somehow or another, a way was made. I can tell you how that was made at another venue. And your question tonight, Ms. Johnson, was answered. When will we get a tour? How about how our government works in Portsmouth? You're getting the tour Friday. So, we're excited, we're going to bump into each other with some things, but the whole aim is all the same, trying to get that accomplished, particularly for the youth, and then for those who are more seasoned, but particularly for them, because we're trying to find a centralized place where that can happen. And it was right in the midst of us all the time. Thank you for your perseverance. Keep praying, because some things still yet to happen, and money is not as long as it can be, but somehow, as this way was made, we'll make ways for that, too. So, thank you.
Very good. Ms. Randall?
I have one final comment, and that is to ensure that every community can be represented where the children have equal access. That will be something that we must insist on.
That's it, we got it.
Okay, thank you.
Very good, thank you. All right, Madam Clerk?
Ms. Dolores Knight?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, Mr. Rowe, Mr. Wilson. My name is Dolores Knight, and I live in Crowder. When I got the paper this morning, I was very upset. Said this couldn't happen, how could most of the council do this to our citizens? It can't be this way. I mean, how could it be this way? Impossible, just impossible. Any of you that own a business, Mayor, you wouldn't want to pay somebody $92,700 and never see anything accomplished, never. No one else would. So, why is this continuing? I called and talked to some people, and they said, Marlene, said she was going to do the right thing. Well, how could she do the right thing? Were he still working, walking around, not doing any, handing out any work, nothing? And if as many people got phone calls as I did today, and Betty Ashbury got today, this place would be half full speaking, but they don't want to come out. Why are you all treating the citizens this way? No answer, of course. But you know, this money, you could really easily pay Mr. Rowe, because he's really doing a super good job. He works really hard for this city, in more ways than one. Well, that's okay, Ms. Marlene. I guess Jesse Andrew Thomas is trying to do a copy of The Lady in Norfolk, but that was for 12 years. How long is this going to go on? Just asking some questions, you know? We wonder why is this happening? 17 months and still hasn't produced anything? I asked the other night, I said, what are you working on? He says, just some things. So, I mean, I am really hurt with this city. It looks, it's bad publicity for us, and we want something to happen that's right for changes. Always headlines is bad. And Paige Cherry, Vice Mayor Cherry, you're running for office again, and you left a meeting early to go to talk to a civic league, I understand. So, I mean, I don't quite understand that either. But I guess we're not supposed to understand a lot, but we are citizens, and this is our money, and something needs to be done with Jesse Andre Thomas. Thank you.
Thank you, good night, Ms. Knight. Ms. Randall?
I feel as if, in due respect to the speakers and to all of the constituents there, God has endowed us with minds, hearts, and feelings. And we are human, and we care about, as I've always embraced you as the Portsmouth family. So, I'm wondering who Marlene is to be addressed that way, in a public assembly. Anything that I have to say, I say it in an open, honest, upfront manner, as I speak to my Portsmouth family. And I view you all as a Portsmouth family. It does not mean that we all are going to think alike, because God made us all differently. And He gave us a mind, and He gave us a heart, but He also taught us to be compassionate as we addressed our fellow man. And as such, I try to do that with dignity and with respect. I will not address it in any other way, but you are my Portsmouth family. And I will always embrace you as a Portsmouth family. Sticks and stones can do a lot of things, but the love of God and the love within your heart takes away all wounds. And I say to you, I love you, and if there is anything I can ever do to help you have a better way of life, or a better quality of life for our young people, that is my mission and purpose in life. I will never do anything to intentionally hurt or degrade you. That is not a part of my character, of my mission, or my pledge to all heavenly Father. And I had to say it, because I will not ever disrespect you, my Portsmouth family. And thank you for permitting me to say that.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Madam Clerk?
Ms. Donna Si.
Good evening. My name is Donna Si, and I live in the Woodbine Farms neighborhood. Principles of Liberty 11. The majority of the people may alter or abolish a government which has become tyrannical. Tyranny defined. Tyranny is the exercise of power over subjects and others with a rigor not authorized by law or justice, or not necessary for the purposes of government. Tyranny is cruelty and oppression. Tyranny takes away from the people's ability to self-govern and decision-making. In Portsmouth, this is what is happening. There are three principles that our servant government has deceitfully removed from our American education. These are the very principles of liberty that our founding fathers discovered and established. Principle one, ethics. Ethics originated with the biblical principles and practice of natural law, the laws of God, or what we call the Ten Commandments. You remember the first one, love God first, not ourselves or our money? Principle two, justice. Justice is accomplished through the power of the court to distribute by legal trial its determination and common law by a petit or grand jury. And principle three, civics. Civics is the civil affairs of the citizens and its administration by their consent. These three principles, ethics, justice, and civics, have been removed by the government, not by the consent of the people. Some examples of the consent of the people ignored in Portsmouth, unethical activity. Some department heads in our government pay some people more money because he likes them, rather than their job title and pay scale. Injustices. A justice department head calls a grand jury instead of a court proceeding, because it's an election year. When the grand jury members on this case was not known to the public, when no consequences are handed down for the wrongdoing, when the people's desires for justice were not carried out, in this case and others. An example of tyranny in civics or community policies, when a department head tells a citizen she doesn't have to understand what's going on in a meeting, just as long as the commissioners understand. When the citizen asks for documentation for the meeting, that request was blown off. When a legislator makes a policy and has it enforced without the consent of the people, all these are examples of tyranny. By nature, people fear and feel overwhelmed by what they do not know or understand. Legislators and city officials have exploited this human weakness by eliminating these three principles from our education. They use entertainment, entitlement, and the media to advance this fear to the point of the people's ignorance. The goal of legislators and city officials are to use tricks to keep the people ignorant, so that they are powerless to act in any constructive way or challenge the status quo. These tricks imply they are smarter than the founding fathers, the Constitution, the Bill of Rights, and even God. They want people to be ignorant of natural law, justice, and citizenship. When people are confronted, they have been programmed to get a pastor, hire a lawyer, or join a political party, so they can be told how to pray, plead, and vote. That means, many people in Portsmouth are also part of the tyrannical party game. Now that election time is drawing near, some of the churches are enlisting their subjects to start telling people who to vote for. The decision has already been made, who will be elected city council in November by these churches. Another example of tyranny is voter fraud that is rampant in Portsmouth. Many people want to seize control over others who do not believe as they do. If one principle of liberty is removed from these three, liberty will be lost. Liberty is the ethical truth of law that declares justice and virtue. Before a man can implement justice, he must possess virtue. The Bible declares that virtue flows from the Lord alone, and defines virtue as, whatever things are true, honest, just, pure, lovely, and of good report. Many people are grieving in Portsmouth, because their liberty has been lost. We will continue to be a second-class city until we restore our liberty and justice for all. Thanks for listening.
Thank you, ma'am.
Ms. Antoinette Franklin?
Hello, councilmembers. My name is Antoinette Franklin, and on a happier note, I want to thank you all for allowing the Portsmouth Drug Court some funding. Of course, I've said before that I'm a product of that program. I volunteer there almost, I've been there pretty much every week since I've left that program. And I'm grateful to you all for allowing that funding, so the program can keep going on for people that was, that was once like me. Of course, I have said before, I once was addicted to substance for a number of years. Now I try to get back to the program that helped me get on my feet. I'd like to publicly thank the Honorable Johnny Morrison. He's put forth a wonderful program. Anybody that can't, that can't get through that program is, to me, is crazy. You know, it took somebody like me to get into that, plus I couldn't stay in the C jail, I ain't jail material. Some people don't mind. Some people don't mind going back and forth. I've never been. But I'm grateful to him for implementing a program like that. And I hope whoever keeps donating and funding the program, keep doing it, keep doing it. Because people, there's still people out there struggling with substance. And they need somewhere to go. I just wish it wasn't a thing where you had to catch a charge to get in there. I wish it was some kind of way where it could be open to somebody that's asking for help, struggling to get help, and have no other way. And then on another note, I'm grateful to you all for the recreation center that sooner or later we're about to get. If you train up a child in a way he should go. He might leave for a little while, but he won't depart. You give these kids in the city of Portsmouth, and some of the older ones, somewhere to go. That would keep them off the streets. That would keep them from joining Portsmouth Drug Treatment Court program or Behavior Healthcare programs. If you teach them the right things, that'll give them somewhere to go. And maybe you might be able to teach them a little substance abuse, how to stay away from things like that. Small children, I teach my grandchildren all the time. Don't go out there and do that stuff. You have to break them in slowly. But like I said, if you train them the right way, they might leave, they won't leave for long. And with that, I pass.
Thank you, Ms. Franklin. And let me just echo that drug treatment program has been recognized statewide, and I also believe nationally. And Judge Morrison and that team has done an outstanding job. Vernon Williams is coordinating that for him. And Judge Dean Sword has also played a very instrumental role in doing that. I serve on the board. The manager serves on the board. And we've got a lot of other community people serving on that. Bishop, I think you're on the board as well. And thank you for those comments.
Y'all need somebody that's been through that program to speak up more.
That's right. You just did it. And you did it, and you did it very well. Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council.
Good evening, sir.
Fellow citizens of the city of Portsmouth. My name is Nathan Clark. I live at 808 Pacific Avenue here in the city of Portsmouth. I'm here before you tonight very disappointed about some of the things that have been happening. One, as other people have told you, mine didn't start this morning. My phone started ringing last night. In addition to social media, emails about the decision in reference to keep the auditor on with the city of Portsmouth. This is very disappointing to me. I'm also retired from the city of Portsmouth. I've served the citizens of the city of Portsmouth here for 20 years before I retired in capacity of public safety. Quite frankly, if I didn't do my job through those 20 years, if I didn't meet my standards, I would have been let go. My job was to provide services for the citizens, and that's what I did to the best of my ability for those 20 years. I think it's very disappointing that at this time somebody that's not producing work is allowed to keep a position making this type of money that could be well spent somewhere else. So I'm very disappointed in that, and as well as many other people that called me on the phone today. The other issue that I'll just speak with briefly, the same two topics you've heard all night. It depends on how long you've been in the city, whether you refer to it as Frederick Military Academy or the Pines Treatment Center Number Two because we had another one in the city. I've been on both campuses through the years. And I was here when the original individuals were speaking about trying to get citizen input for it. And I've also heard in the past meetings when it was said that once it was closed, it'd be a tour. And I know they're saying we're going to do a tour Friday. But it was disappointing last night to a lot of citizens. I got contacted last night when they see children playing on the field. And I believe they said earlier that we were going to find out who those kids were. I believe Mr. Rose said they were children from Portsmouth, but we did not know what league that was. I'm very, I would like to know who these kids are because there is a lot of athletic youth programs in the city of Portsmouth. I was at Chick-fil-A tonight supporting one of the athletic programs this evening. But we would like to know who was on the field? Did they request to use the field? Were they invited to use the field? We have a big issue with transparency, or I should say, the lack of. Citizens want to be involved in this. And the better it is, if you have skin in the game, people are more adept to use this. So I know that we're saying we're going to have tours this Friday, which that is very short notice for people that are working. It's kind of hard to drop your things and come and tour this field on Friday. So it's, I'm glad that we're planning on having tours and getting the city involved. But I think it's a little bit of backstepping because that was something that was promised before that the gates were ever opened. That's all I had to say this night. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Clark.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, honorable members of council and fellow citizens. At the Portsmouth City Community Meeting a week and a day ago, I surfaced an issue that reappeared in the paper this morning. But my take on it is a little bit different. I hold you all collectively responsible for the inadequate oversight of a person that you hired, a position that you created, a position that you defined. You did not do your duty. Mr. Moody spent several minutes responding to my issues. And I want to take a little time to respond to his response. First of all, I would ask Mr. Moody to step down as Chair of the Council Personnel Committee because clearly he does not have the requisite skills to operate at that, in that capacity. The Personnel Committee should be the first interface with those that council manages. And when Mr. Moody addressed my concerns, all he did was make a bunch of excuses. We're not down at City Hall every day. We're not checking whether the attorney is shuffling his papers or the clerk is clerking, the city assessor is assessing, and so on. That doesn't cut it. Because the other appointee positions in this city are positions that have been in existence for a very long time. And there is a whole tradition in terms of what the people in those positions are to do. There is a well-rounded-out job description for all of them. And what they do is quite visible. If the assessor doesn't assess, the city treasury goes dry. If the clerk doesn't do her job, these meetings don't happen. And if the city attorney doesn't do his job, y'all are out on a limb in many respects. City auditor's job being newly created needs more definition and more nurturing. So Mr. Moody, who doesn't come down here to watch them every day, I recall he was present, almost omnipresent, when he was chasing the last city manager out. And he came with help. He brought the media with him. And he was running up and down the stairs, carrying on, and definitely overseeing. So how, if you can spend that much time to pull the rug out from under one of your employees, why is it that you can't invest that kind of time in seeing to it that a new person in a new position is getting off to a good start? That shows a lack of personnel management skills. Now, just because I named him doesn't mean the rest of you are out of the, off the hook. You defined this position. There was so much talk about how this was going to save us money. There were so many expectations raised among the citizenry. And you have disappointed your constituency for creation of that position, as well as misspent a significant amount of money. This can't go on. You need to get together as a group and clearly define what your expectations are, set checkpoints and milestones, and conscientiously enforce them if we are going to get any benefit from this position. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Moody?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Gudal Dikicowski. To start with, I would take the elevator. I would never run up and down stairs. Didn't pull the rug out from under a manager last time I checked. That takes four members of council to do that. But I was one of them because our manager could not explain, just like our auditor can't explain, the manager couldn't explain at that time why he had two fire chiefs on the payroll. So I would do that again. And I did not spend an inordinate amount of time at City Hall because I was in an executive hiring position, executive with a $100 million distribution company. And I've been in management since 1983. So I've hired some excellent employees, and I've made some hiring mistakes. But you know, one thing was consistent. I did not give anybody who was not producing 17 months to produce zero sales because I would have been gone. Now, you paint a real tidy picture. You put it on this council. The word I used that we had given him marching orders, we did, put him on 90-day probation. And within that 90 days, on the 90th day, we got some incomplete work. That's not acceptable to me. And I don't think that's explainable to the taxpayers of this city. Now, you paint, you paint a pretty picture of me running up and down the stairs. Let me tell you something. I'll run up and down the stairs every day if I see an employee like that producing zero and getting paid for 18 months at $92,700 a year. You know, if you want to hire him, maybe we can cut a deal. Do you need an employee? Maybe we can sign you up. Thank you.
Dr. Edmonds?
Yes, I just want to say, to some degree, Mark, you're right. We all are responsible. And we did give our city auditor a 90-day period to, after we had talked with him to bring findings back to us. And he did. I was satisfied with what he brought back, and so were some others. And so I think because we didn't well define or give it all that we needed to give, it was not on him, but it was on us to do more so. But I was very pleased with the outcome of the 90-day period. And thusly, I voted for him to stay on.
Thank you, Dr. Edmonds. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Good night.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, councilmembers and staff. Pat Simons from Mimosa Cove. A week ago Saturday, I got a call from a good friend of mine. She's had her father-in-law's house up for sale in Portsmouth for about a year. And she was livid on the phone. She was just, I couldn't calm her down. I ended up going to her house. She had gotten an email from her bank that her bank account was overdrawn over $800. And so I went to her house, and we pulled her paperwork. And we ended up coming down to the city Monday morning. She sold that home July 25. And at closing, all the taxes are prorated and paid. Everything's taken care of through the attorney's office. And she followed up. After closing, she called the city and made sure they knew the house had been sold and the taxes were marked as paid. So she got a notice on around September 5. It stated September 2. And it says, "Dear taxpayer, we have reviewed your real estate tax and stormwater management fee for the fiscal year 2014-15 and found that we have to adjust the funds that are being debited from your checking savings account to cover your quarterly tax. Your quarterly real estate tax and stormwater management fee will be $884.36. We will debit zero September 12. However, we will debit $884.36 quarterly through June 5 of 2015. The house was sold July 25. And even though it says they will debit zero on September 12, they did it." When she got this letter on September 5, she called and talked to the people. And they assured her that debit had been canceled, it wouldn't happen. But low and behold, it did. And as we were sitting in meeting with the person downstairs, she couldn't even understand. We were like, "Well, where did this $884 go?" "Oh, it's right here. See, your tax is paid." But it was already paid. She couldn't understand that. I mean, what level of people do you have working here? This is the same friend of mine that I showed up here a couple months ago where she was fighting because she had two water bills totaling $800 and some odd dollars and HRSD bills well over $100 in a house that was empty. We worked through the people on the first floor and ended up with the supervisor on the second floor. And then we ended up at the assistant city manager's office after about seven days when we couldn't get any satisfaction. They, the people downstairs say, "People are stealing your water." I don't know how, unless they had a pumper truck. I mean, you know, it's just ridiculous what you, the level you have to go through to get anything satisfied here. When you start working on that first floor, you might as well just throw up your hands and go right to level six because you're not going to have anything happen and get any satisfaction until you get to this floor. That's my experience, 12 years with this city. And I could cite other examples, too. In addition to that, I just want to say, when I read the paper last night online, and I saw that you voted to keep this auditor, I thought about all the times and all the many people that came up here and talked to you when you were in the process of hiring an auditor and all the suggestions we gave. And we asked you to appoint a citizen committee to work with him. Nothing, you would do nothing for that. You just put him in there and let him work. And then after 18 months, you decide to keep him on even after this 90-day trial. And maybe you saw something good in the last 90 days. But that does not make up for what he didn't do for, what, a year? Now, you are teaching the children of Portsmouth that doing nothing is acceptable and expected. Do nothing and get your pay. That's what you are teaching the children in this city. Children learn by example. And I got to say, shame on any of you that voted to keep this auditor for setting the bar so low as to breed illusions and attitudes of impotent irresponsibility among the future leaders of this city. Thank you and have a good evening.
Good night, ma'am.
Our final speaker is Ms. Juanita Harris Jones.
Good evening. Juanita Harris Jones for Virginia Breast Cancer Foundation. I stand today con formally to thank the citizens of Portsmouth for coming out on September 13 for our annual breast cancer walk. I also would like to thank your police auxiliary Lieutenant Scott G. for his kind and supportive service during our walk. But I also came to tell you, give you some facts, that we are not a fly-by-night foundation. We have 22-plus years standing. We are the only chapter here in the Hampton Roads area, but we do have five other chapters in the state of Virginia. Fact is that we are so state-based. Everything that we do, all our fundings, all our activities stays here in the state of Virginia. Fact is, we are the ones with the pink ribbons that you see everywhere. We initiated that Pink Ribbon Campaign. Fact two, we are the ones with the breast cancer plates. We initiated that. But most important, our most important work is the federal funding for people with breast cancer, mammograms, and any kind of cancer. That's the most important thing. But above all of that, the most important thing to us in the Hampton Roads chapter is the people in Portsmouth. I stated before, we have the highest death rate here in Portsmouth, not in Norfolk, not in Chesapeake, not in Suffolk, but here in Portsmouth. And I'm going to keep coming back to somebody listen, and I will walk if I have to walk by myself. But I would like to thank Mr. Pace also because he did get it out there for us. And we had a good, nice day. And I'm here to also present you, Mayor, with a T-shirt from your support from afar. So.
Thank you very much.
So that's it.
Thank you, ma'am. Very good. And thank you for what you do.
Thank you.
All right. All right, we're adjourned. Good night. Thank you.